I'm allowed, and this is an issue I've done a lot of research on. I would just like to respectfully request that you think about your families, your friends. This is not a Republican issue, this is not a Democrat issue. This is an issue of the general welfare of the American people.
Thank you.
We had an 85-year-old woman stripped searched by the TSA at JFK Airport last week, and we have no idea who is spraying us with what. We have an idea of with what, but we don't have any idea really who is flying these planes. And the average law-abiding citizen can't even get on a plane without being harassed. This is insanity. The science behind the argument is sound. Anybody with a functioning set of eyes, a critical thinking process, that has spent any significant amount of time reviewing this evidence could see it as sound. And it's clearly the will of the people that's educated on this matter, but an end is put to this. Please give us the unanimous decision to pass this bill so that we can show the world that America's taking freedom back, and we're not going to be sprayed like a bunch of bugs. I know there's a lot of other speakers, so I would like the rest of the time to be reserved for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Followed by Greg Fisher.
Hello, I'm Pauline Cantwell from Greenwich, Connecticut. And I came out today because I have been concerned about this issue for many years. I have worked at the UN since 94, the UN Peace Caucus there, and getting involved in the weaponization of weather, weather as a weapon, and got interested in the geoengineering issue, which has been covered by the UN for a long time. In fact, they passed a convention banning the hostile manipulation of weather in 1978. I have five grandchildren on Long Island and children living here. I'm concerned about their health, I'm concerned about the health of people all over the world. I started doing a radio show in Greenwich, Memorial Day of last year. My theme song is "Blue Skies" by Willie Nelson. And I want my blue skies back. I want to wake up and see the blue skies when I get up, and I want to see them when I go, when I see the sunset at night. I'm tired of seeing the desert sunsets in Greenwich, Connecticut. We shouldn't be having bright red sunsets in Greenwich. I was in Texas, early November. I met with George Bomar, who heads up the weather modification program there. I had him on my radio show November 15th. November 22nd, I talked about some of it on November 15th. Those shows are archived at www.wgch.com. We talked about a program in Mexico by a Russian weather modification company, Lot Technologies, doing ionization of weather, doing rain enhancement and precipitation denial. And we talked about military corporations, Sky Blue, who came to Texas and got a permit. They said they were former military. They got a permit to alter the weather using laser technology. And then they disappeared this year, they can't be found. And the only thing we can find is Sky Blue, which is a space technology corporation in Colorado. I went to the Bonn Conference in Germany and distributed Rosalind Peterson flyers. I have Rosalind Peterson California Sky Watch on my show almost every week. And I distributed these geoengineering flyers. Octopus on one side strangling the earth, and the scientist on the other side saying, "Just trust us, we're going to put all these chemicals up, and it's going to be okay." And it shows the CARE rocket, C-A-R-E, Charged Aerosol Released Experiment. That rocket went over my house in Greenwich, September 9th, 19, uh, two years ago. 19th, September 19th. My next-door neighbor thought it was a UFO. It was spraying aluminum oxide and was seen by a cruise ship, maybe somebody who saw it go over your house. It was launched from Wall of Island, Virginia, to create nascent clouds. These are being done deliberately. I was taken out of the conference, told I couldn't distribute this flyer anymore. It wasn't authorized. And then I was told the next day it was a case of mistaken identity. It was no case of mistaken identity, because I brought Rosalind as keynote speaker in '07 at the Climate Change Conference, and we did a program on geoengineering, weather warfare, and all these issues. And they know what I'm talking about, and they didn't want it discussed. So I applaud all the people here. I am so impressed. I have been a lone person in the wilderness at these conferences, and I am really impressed by people's knowledge and their concern that there is a history of military spraying diseases on people. You can check out the book Clouds of Secrecy by Leonard Cole, about programs they did in the 70s. It's not new. And this stuff is going on all over the world. When I was in Germany, we went to Zuckspitz, the highest point in Germany, and I videotaped planes spraying jet contrails. I call them jet contrails, persistent jet contrails that create clouds, because the Air Force calls chemtrails a conspiracy. And I don't want to get put in the hemp of conspiracy, because I deal in facts. When I do a speech, I want to make sure that my facts are right. So thank you so much. And I have a letter that lists a lot of the things I'm concerned about and want to congratulate you for what you're doing, and I hope you do carry it further. And I hope we can spread this into Connecticut, into Texas, into all of the United States and get awareness of what's really being done. Thank you.
Greg Fisher followed by William S. Eer.
Hi, I'm Greg Fisher. I'm here in my role as the Director of Americans for Legal Reform. My point is really short. I'm going to put a material safety data sheet into the record for aluminum oxide. Aluminum oxide is a known skin-and-eye irritant. She's speaking up right there, we're going to be spraying irritants into our airspace. Also, it's worse than that. Actually, I'm going to also submit a study from the American Thoracic Association, which links aluminum oxide particulates to pulmonary fibrosis. Just in short, I incorporate what prior speakers said. There is significant health risk from inhaling aluminum compounds. And Americans for Legal Reform supports this legislation wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you.
This piece of legislation is absolutely necessary. And it is also necessary that we not forget the Constitution. And in the Constitution, it does mention promoting the general welfare. And this is in violation of that with all of the spraying that's going on. Also, we have to keep in mind the 10th Amendment of the Constitution, which says that all power is not given to the federal government of the state, resides with the states and the people. And the 10th Amendment has not been used enough. And I would want New York State to do more of what Arizona and Texas has already done, and that is to claim state sovereignty over those powers that are clearly in the Constitution. What we have now is that the Constitution itself seems to be something the federal government sees as inconvenient. Let's take a look at the Fourth Amendment. And when you look at the Fourth Amendment, it's being eviscerated by Homeland Security. So when I speak about spraying, I do want to remind you that if somebody's a little too articulate and has too many facts, they can be deemed an enemy of the state where there is no evidence of violence, threat of violence, or desire of violence. But somebody who might get in the way of either the military or corporate profits in the public interest of health. Now, I would like for you to keep in mind that when you take a look at the name of chemical compounds, keep in mind three metals and three non-metals. The three metals is you have aluminum, barium, and strontium. Now, when it comes to the non-metals, you're going to have the sulfides, the chlorides, and the fluorides, the chlorides, the sulfides. Now, the thing is that you can have an enormous number of chemical compounds. It has any one or more of those. But the result is, and I brought in the evidence here, if you ever want copies, this is fine. One of them deals with carcinogens, raising the cancer rates. And the other one deals with lowering the fertility rates. The way the fertility rates have been lowered, and it was first discovered with frogs, and then it started to show up in terms of statistics involving people, is that first there's the obvious one, our lower sperm counts. But then was something less obvious, and that was the issue of women's eggs not being receptive. And that is where, well, what is normal is that the first sperm is accepted and all others are rejected. But the first sperm is now being rejected as all other sperm, and this means infertility inflicted on the woman. And what you find is that this coincides with higher rates of having chemical compounds ending up in the air and then percolating down into the ground every time it rains, into the aquifer. And therefore, it mixes with drinking water, so you're either breathing it or you're ingesting it. And what are the three items? You have aluminum, you have barium and strontium. Then you have, on the non-metal side, you have chlorination, the fluorination, and the sulfides. And when you put all that together, we are having virtually a chemical attack on us by our own government. But why would they do that? There's a number of reasons. First, where people on their deathbed have then, have let things out because they didn't like holding in what they had to, signing these confidentiality agreements. And these are non-confidential agreements, confidentiality agreements, in order to protect the name of our agents overseas. And I want to keep secrecy of our names of our agents overseas until they get home. But what we're talking about here is secrecy over what is done that affects health. So the military, not knowing the health consequences, is using us as guinea pigs. Then you have something else. You have contracts between the government and private industry. And if it's good for corporate profits and dangerous for our health, what happens? We see what happens.
Beautiful.
And next is, I'm not certain what this name is because of the writing. Is it Dave Handel? Does that sound right? Or Haxtill? I can't tell with a taste.
That's correct, Handel.
Dave Handel?
Oh, Candell.
Handel. Okay, you're next.
The aluminum and everything fog my brain.
Go ahead, Mr. Cohen.
My name is Harold Cohen, and I represent myself, but I'm also an independent researcher. I'd like to put it into the record. I have a lot more, I bring a trunk here. The first thing is documentation, just dating back, actually originally started in 2009. This is a letter, a document to Representative Steve Israel, which started in January 7th of 2010, and then was revised in February 2010. I gave this to Steve Israel's office, finally acted on it, and he gave it to the FAA, basically the US Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration. It's interesting, they responded in February 7th of 2011, one year later. One, they denied what I was stating, you can see the details in here. Second, what I find interesting is that they refer to a UN organization called the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, okay? Which is a joke. The self-proclaimed experts, when they're really not. To counter that, I'm going to give you a document, which is a two-years of research on the IPCC. And this was done by Donna Lefanbois. She did two years of research on this. The title of her book is "The Delinquent Teenager Who Is Mistaken For The World's Top Climate Expert." Basically, it goes a limited time, I guess I'll give you a synopsis of it. Basically, in her quest for getting the truth, she found out the following findings about the IPCC. The offers are frequently not reputable scientists at all, but graduate students. The sources that they cited in IPCC documents are frequently from radical green groups, not objective scientists. The IPCC routinely censors scientists who do not agree with the current global warming hysteria about greenhouse gases. Incidentally, CO2 comprises only 1% of the atmosphere, and is not a pollutant, not like your fumes from a car. The IPCC pursuing a leftist, globalist political agenda, and not a scientific one. The peer review process used in determining what articles get published by the IPCC is a charade. Only radical, green viewpoints get favorable treatment. The IPCC seeks out articles with predetermined conclusions that fit the IPCC agenda. I can provide a lot more data than just this little summary on this, on how they basically throw away data just to get their, to make the viewpoint that they want. Can I give this to? I have photographs from here with the documented spraying. I want to thank all of you for your efforts in the IR 2029, to establish that this is necessary legislation, reserve our health, our environment, our water and food supplies. The bottom line, what it boils down to is this, who is more important? Corporations, private interests, or the people? Also, all of us, and you, all of you are affected by this spraying. Let me get into some other things. What are the origins of the chemtrails? The origins of chemtrails was original purpose was for warfare, that is, weather control. If you control the weather, you have an advantage against the enemy, right? As time went on, you had a development of nanoparticles. Nanoparticles are basically, particles are a billionth of a meter, very small. You need a microscope to see them in the high power, okay? And nanoparticles of difference, of the same substances versus grains versus nanoparticles will act differently, and also in their absorption into the body. They can be breathed in very much more easily. They absorb in your cells and your organs. Then they contain viruses, bacteria, fungi, et cetera. And basically, also was originally used for biological warfare, you know, for warfare purposes. Then also something else, as time went on, you have very, more than micro-miniturized electronics. I guess you've heard the term RFID, or RFID chips, radio frequency ID chips, right? They also make, contain micro, really miniaturized versions of RFID chips, in very small, very small structure, and that could be used for tracking individuals. That's good for warfare purposes too. You can track, the original purpose is to track your enemy where they are remotely. And also could, unfortunately, could also be used for tracking populations here on Earth. There's a film, which I'll make available for all of you if you want it. It's non-copyrighted and freely can be freely copied. What in the world are they spraying? I don't know if any of you...
You're done, Mr. Cohen, you're done, thank you.
I'm done?
You're done. Now you have five minutes.
All right, just one more thing. Look up...
No, that's it. That's it, you're done, you're done, Dan Harder.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Dave Handel. And for years, actually, I've been wanting something like this to actually take place. And actually, my experience with this geoengineering happened about four years ago. I was walking through a beautiful Nassau, Suffolk County Park, Andre Hall. And, no, I'm sorry, it was actually Compton State Park. And a gentleman handed me a paper, all kinds of conspiracy theories. And I thought, what is this nonsense? I was ready to throw it out, like it was garbage. And I started reading about geoengineering and chemtrails, like, this is nonsense. And I started paying more attention to the clouds and everything. And I saw sometimes days would go by that would be just normal clouds. Then all of a sudden, you have three days. Now, the planes are always flying, they fly around stop, around the clock, because, you know, we're in New York, we're near a couple airports. Obviously, there's Iceland, MacArthur, there's LaGuardia, and there's Kennedy. So planes are flying around the clock. You'd have three or four days where you would see just normal weather. Then all of a sudden, you'd look up and you'd see, and these planes at that altitude, obviously, the weather doesn't change much at the 35,000 feet. All of a sudden, you'd see lines, like, and they would start spreading. And I'd be like, what is this? This is obviously not normal. And I started believing what I was reading. I'd start observing, I'd tell people, I'd say, "You're crazy, they're not doing anything with the weather." It just was bizarre, you know? And if you have four or five days, and all of a sudden, you start seeing lines, and then it starts dispersing. And one of the really clear signs of the chemtrails is when you see the line, and all of a sudden, it stops, then it turns back on again. Now, if a plane was flying and you stopped seeing the contrails, doesn't mean the plane, the engine stopped combusting, or the engine's going to collapse? All of a sudden, what, did it turn back on the spray jets? Where they have to reload the canisters? I mean, that's pretty clear, because a normal contrail on a plane would have to constantly be going. And they usually disperse in 10 minutes. So anyhow, to make a long story short, I've been telling everybody for about three or four years. So the fact that I could actually speak my mind among like-minded people that didn't think I was crazy, just kind of, this is like awesome. And actually, I also saw that there's a $2,500 fine. Now, I don't know how you can actually fine them, that's like throwing a penny out of your window in your car, a $2,500 fine. It should be like a million-dollar fine. Joke, the $2,500 fine, it should be raised to like at least a million dollars.
That's right.
And, you know, you just look around, you see the weather. I don't want to tie this time, but that's my two cents. And also, I'm kind of embarrassed to be an American, to see that they're doing this. My mom actually came from Nazi Germany, and my grandfather's in a concentration camp. And, you know, she's 90, and she wouldn't believe it, they're spraying us, because she loves this country. But the fact that matter, seeing what's going on, it's kind of a shame to be an American and see what's going on. It's kind of horrendous, you know? Thank you very much for being able to have me.
Thank you, respect and members of the legislature, thank you very much. I'll only say this for dress shoes perhaps in one minute. And what I want to say is I cannot dispute what they're saying, as little as I know. I cannot add to what they've said. But I want to give something in the way of history. I want to bring up something that this legislature's body, a tremendous role they played many years ago. I ask you to just follow me for one second. The battle of spraying, the battle against the spraying of things in our atmosphere is not new. In 1967, right here in Suffolk County, a tremendous battle took place with the Environmental Defense Fund. It was the very first environmental group in this country, formed by scientists that lived right here in Suffolk County, possible neighbors of yours. And they came forward and they said to the council here, to the legislature, say, "Listen, there's something wrong with DDT. There's something wrong with the spraying of DDT. And not only the mosquitoes get killed, but you're killing just about everything else. It got in the water, it got into the air, it has a long half-life, you couldn't get rid of it. There are questions whether or not it causes cancer, and it's by no means that possibly it's linked to breast cancer, which Suffolk County has a very high incidence on a nationwide level." But the bottom line is that this legislature body acted. They agreed with the EDF, they acted on it. Within a matter of years, DDT was banned from the United States entirely, entirely, done. Then several years, the Nixon administration, following what took place right here at Riverhead, formed the Environmental Protection Agency, the very first body of its kind to monitor the safety of our environment, the very first of its kind. In 1970, the Clean Air Act, followed by the Clean Water Act, enormous legislative moves for the protection of people by their representatives. It's what they're asking, what everybody's asking, is that ask yourself the question, we all share the same air, we drink the same waters, we walk the same streets, parks, go boating, play tennis, whatever, we live here together. Possibly, right here, you, the representatives today, 2011, 2012, maybe you can make that same historic movement that'll move right to the national level, the White House?
And we got Mr. Brennan, followed by, looks like Penny. I don't know, Penny something.
Yeah, Perry Finkelstein, I should have been adopted, I write my...
Go ahead.
Many of us have heard the ads on the radio of late, "See something, say something." See something, we have a long time waiting to say something. I come from Ireland, you can probably tell by my funny accent. It's not just over your county, it's over the entire globe. Something is going on. In the farmhouse in Ireland where I lived, nowhere close for hundreds of miles, it's not exactly, you know, a big airplane country, a bit of a tiny island. There's just as many operations going on over there as there is right over Long Island. I'm down from Connecticut, and it's crazy up there too. The trees are all dying, the spruce is, it's absolutely absurd. Now, the question I kind of had, if you propose a ban, and I hope you will, you know, a ban on the weather-altering chemicals, how do you propose to enforce the law? Because remember, in the aftermath of September 11th, it was 9/11, in which aircraft were used as a weapon? You know, we saw what can happen. We all need to be more observant of our sky. Altering our local climate with chemical cloud seeding, et cetera, without our consent is an act of bio-warfare. A future generation's health will depend on you making a decision here to ban the spraying. You have, you know, on the streets, we have police that patrol it to make sure we don't go speeding. We have OSHA on the work sites. We have, you know, we've got all sorts of agencies. But who's going to control these planes if it's a black off? Who knows where it's funded from? It appears it is. It may be not American, it's internationally funded. You have to consider that. And you've got a lot of evidence from people tonight, you can look through what they've given here. Can you incorporate, perhaps, in your ban proposal, an in-flice intercept, based by whatever agency, to take down for examination of these aircraft? Somebody has to start doing this. And by either get special agents, which I would like you to also have civilian, non-related agencies involved with them. We need to basically get some agencies that, short of shooting them down, do something else. Urgent. And in fact, if necessary, they're unmarked aircraft. Get the U.S. Guard, shoot them down. We don't like to encourage this, but in the aftermath of 9/11, 2001, aircraft were used as a weapon on this country, it's happening again. That's all I have, guys.
And it's followed by Christine McKay.
Good afternoon, I'll be brief. First, I'd like to thank legislator Romaine for bringing this vital issue into the light. My name is Perry Finkelstein, I stand here, represent myself, as well as the voices of my children. And I'd like to say my potential future grandchildren, but I don't even know if that's going to happen because of, our health and well-being is being threatened in this very moment. This is a global issue, it's not just happening here. I mean, a lot of evidence has been presented, it's indisputable. And, you know, everyone here, it's not us versus you. We all breathe the same air, we all drink the same water, our children play in the same playgrounds. And this is an opportunity for you esteemed folks to make this date, a date that everyone remembers, not just here, not just another hearing day in Suffolk County. We are Suffolk County, Long Island, New York, and this could be a stand that goes global, and it could make a huge difference. This is happening. This is, there's no debate, this is happening. We are being poisoned, we're being killed, we're being exterminated. It's happening, okay? We're all part of the same community here, it's not us versus you guys, it's not, you know? So, you know, I'm asking here for my children, for your children, for future generations, to look at this and to make a stand, and to make right what needs to be done. You know, I sit and watch up for decades already. I could watch a beautiful, clear blue sky go from a beautiful... blue sky go from a beautiful sunny sky to hazy, toxic pollutants, you know, and I feel it, I sense it, I know it. So, there has been no accountability, there's been no transparency, and it needs to happen, it needs to happen now. We don't have time, we are running out of time. It's the 1% that is making these decisions. Okay? So, the future generations, your grandchildren, yourself, okay? Look up in the skies, this is no joke. So, the Shindhi people of this country, also known as the Apache, have a saying, Kadishte, that means all is made beautiful. So I implore you, okay? Let's make it beautiful again. We have the power, you have the power, please. Not much left.
Come on, Kristi McKay, followed by John Martell. Kristi McKay. Oh, Kristi McKay, how about John Martell?
I'd like to thank the legislature today, for hearing the public. And I'm going to get into the definition of what you might not be familiar with, what is a chemtrail, and what is a contrail. I don't expect you to be familiar with this, we are well-rehearsed, we have researched this, so I'll make it very simple and very clear. When you see a plane in the sky, and it leaves a contrail, C-O-N-T-R-A-I-L, that is the exhaust from the plane, that exhaust dissipates in about 15 minutes. When you see a chemical trail, that trail does not dissipate in 15 minutes. If you watch that trail, it becomes more defined. And if you continue to watch that trail, it will overlap and twist in on itself. And then, within an hour or two hours, it will expand across the horizon. And within due time, those toxins will float down to the earth and contaminate the earth. I'd like to bring your attention to the date of February 20th of 2010, an event that took place in San Diego. The American Association for the Advancement of Science had a meeting regarding geoengineering. During that meeting, a person from the audience, a concerned person, who was well aware of chemtrails and their toxins, had asked David Keith, who was a proponent and a supporter and an advocate of geoengineering, a very important question. The millions of tons of toxic barium and aluminum that's being dumped into the atmosphere that transcends down to the earth, he asked David Keith if this is at all a threat to humankind. And I'm going to quote for you exactly what David Keith, a proponent and supporter and advocate of geoengineering, said on February 20th of 2010, and I quote, "We haven't done anything serious on alumina, and there could be something terrible that we find tomorrow that we have not looked at," quote unquote. I'm going to continue on, because we are pressed for time. I have brought some documentation. I have a 10-page document here that's entitled "Air Force Research Laboratory in Vitrotoxicity of Aluminum Nanoparticles in Rats." Now, anybody who knows anything about the human species and rats, rats are used and scientifically accepted as an element of our world, and what is bad for the rat is bad for the humans. This 10-page document, moving along to the end of the page, the conclusion is, and I quote, "Aluminum oxide nanoparticles displayed significant toxicity after 96 and 144 hours post-exposure." And I will be submitting this document to the board after I talk. Another thing that I would like to bring up regarding documentation, very interesting, 42-page documentation. This documentation is entitled "Weather as a Force Multiplier: Owning the Weather in 2025," a research paper presented to the Air Force. And this research paper was done by Colonel Tammy J. House, Lieutenant Colonel James B. Near, Major Ann Mercer, and Major James E. Pug. I will go to page 27 of this document, and going down to the last paragraph, the paragraph states, "Nanotechnology also offers possibilities for creating simulated weather, a cloud or several clouds of microscopic computer particles, all communicating with each other, and with a large control system could provide tremendous capabilities. Interconnected, atmospherically buoyant, and having navigation capabilities in three dimensions, such clouds could be designed to have wide-range elements within our skies." In closing, I would like to say, please remember the world you are now seeing. There will be counterclaims within the evidence that will be presented in and around the claims of what is commonly known today as chemtrails. You will be told that all is normal and as it should be. You will be told that there is nothing to be concerned about, and that everything is always as it always has been. Your eyewitnesses' accounts will be dismissed as unreliable. This dismissal by acclaimed authorities, while you get the picture.
Beautiful. We will follow you, followed by John Martell.
Hello, thank you very much. I am here in the capacity of President of Empire State Lyme Disease Association. I don't blame anyone up there or in the audience for doubting the veracity of the claims about geoengineering of our skies. Six years ago, a friend told me to investigate chemtrails. This friend is intelligent, well-informed, and very accomplished, yet she left it to me to look up in the sky, to do my own research. Even though I respect my friend, I did try to dismiss her chemtrail claims. Two years ago, I did become convinced that we do have a problem. I saw chemtrails in Denver, Colorado, and I saw them in Virginia Beach, Virginia, and I've seen them here. And they don't just fly every day, they fly every day and every night. There are many connections that have been made. Huge corporations, such as Novartis, which is based in Germany, have bought American companies, for example, Beech Nut Baby Foods and the American Seed Company. Are they connected to this geoengineering of our skies? Is our government or parts of our government connected or other groups? I leave it to others to answer these questions. I see planes flying which deliberately seem to be creating patterns in the sky above us, as you've heard over and over, sorry. But they make clouds, they crisscross, and they slowly dissipate and form a cloud cover which in effect obliterates the sun. So many of us are just too busy, and I've been too overwhelmed with concerns of Lyme patients to really pay much attention. So, it's understandable that if you're not looking for something, even if it's the elephant in the living room, you're not going to see it. Just as my friend told me years ago, don't believe me, just look it up and look up in the sky. I have two questions. Number one, if these trails were only contrails or water vapor, or if they use the same fuel used by skywriting planes, the trails would dissipate quietly and leave no effect on our sky. So, they, are they just contrails, like the disbelievers would have you believe? Number two, if normal, typical planes can fly without leaving any trails, I may be oversimplifying, but why not also make it a law that all planes use the less offensive fuel? Health-wise, vitamin D deficiency is real, Lyme patients may in fact be a group of the population who may be the most seriously impacted. It is depressing to suffer from tick-borne diseases and, and a lack of blue skies, beautiful sunsets and sunrise. Sunrise is, that doesn't help Lyme patients or anyone. If someone, as I do believe now, if someone is, or at least they do have the capacity of adding harmful chemicals, et cetera, to their chemtrails, Lyme patients are not healthy enough to withstand this kind of barrage for long. As for who is responsible for this, I don't believe it is our total US government or any other country's total government, and I also doubt if it is all corporations, but we do need to find out who they are, and we do need to stop them. The IR 2029 is a really good beginning, and I thank you very much, and especially Romaine.